On that threat in both open and closed hearings. It is utterly devastating to see more victims of this violence. Buffalo, our heartbreaks for you.
Alright, so, uh, this, this is gonna be interesting because
I asked my colleagues
I'm obsessed, I'm obsessed with UFOs.
Now turn to the business of this hearing.
James Fox's, uh, the phenomenon, that was my second favorite film from twenty twenty. Uh, it's a film that totally re- reawoken my eyes to the UFO phenomenon. And, uh, it's a ten out of ten film and it, it, it basically frightened me. And I've been researching UFOs like a psychopath ever since.
In twenty seventeen, we learned for the first time that the Department of Defense had quietly restarted a similar
And I've been eagerly awaiting this.
We now call unidentified aerial phenomena.
Talking about UFOs or UAPs.
Last year, Congress rewrote the charter for that organization. Now called the Airborne Object Identification and Management Synchronization Group, or AIM-SOG. For short, today, we will bring that organization out of the shadows.
So what's crazy is, uh, the House Committee. Hold on a second, someone just messaged me. Uh, the House Committee is holding their first open congressional hearing on unidentified aerial vehicles. In more than half a century, today. It's insane. Uh, Congress has not held any open hearings on UFOs since the Air Force closed a public investigation known as Project Blue Book in early nineteen seventy. Uh, so to say this is a big deal is understatement. So let's, let's tune in here.
Thank you for coming today. First, we need you to update us on the status of AIM-SOG. The legislation creating it was passed in December. The deadline for implementation is fast approaching. But the group does not even have a named director. We need to know, sirs, the status of the organization and the obstacle to getting it up and running. Secondly, you have to convince the audience today. And most especially, our military and civilian aviators. The culture has changed. That those who report UAPs will be treated as witnesses, not as crooks. Thirdly, you need to show us, Congress, and the American public, whose imaginations you have captured. You are willing to follow the facts where they lead. You know, we fear sometimes that the DOD is focused more on emphasizing what it can explain, not investigating what it can. Looking for you to assure us today that all conclusions are on the table. One final note, we are mindful today that AIM-SOG is not starting from scratch. This is the third version of this task force in DOD. And civil society groups like the Mutual UFO Network, Mr. Corbell, and others have been collecting data on this issue for years. I hope you'll explain how you can leverage the knowledge and experience of our prior work on this matter to move the AIM-SOG along. The last time Congress had a hearing on UAPs was half a century ago. I hope that it does not take fifty more years for Congress to hold another because transparency is desperately needed.
Yeah, for sure.
Now turn to Ranking Member Crawford for comments he'd like to make.
Especially since I think unfortunately, I think unfortunately, the government knows more than they're letting on about goddamn UFOs.
Congress and the executive branch on this important topic.
Way more than they're letting on.
While this topic evokes creative imaginations of many, aside from all the hype and speculation, there are important underlying issues posed by UAPs. Despite the serious nature of this topic, I have to say I'm more interested in our understanding of Chinese and Russian hypersonic weapon development or understanding why this administration was so slow to share actionable intelligence with the Ukrainians. However, inasmuch as this topic may help us better understand unknown activities of Russia and China, I am on board. The intelligence community has a serious duty to our taxpayers to prevent potential adversaries such as China and Russia from surprising us with unforeseen new technologies.
I really, I really hope I don't drop the camera. And I don't have a giant windball on my lip or something, cuz we're, we're doing this as a oneer, you know what I mean?
In general, the IC spends much of its time and resources trying to understand what we call known unknowns. When it comes to foreign nations' weapons systems and sensors, known unknowns are those features that we don't fully understand yet. The challenge associated with UAP is that they are completely unknown and require a more expansive collection and analysis effort. The intelligence community must balance addressing known threats to our nation, national security with preventing technical surprise. We must continue to follow the facts where they lead us and ensure that there are no technical surprises.
Bro, they, they are officially And granted, granted, last June, June twenty twenty one, they released this preliminary report, like the first of its kind. Uh, you know, the, the government put out this preliminary report about UFOs and confirmed that there are aerial vehicles, that there is UFOs, unknown vehicles. That appears physical objects flying around with behavior that doesn't make sense. And like, I should do a video on that, but let's Try to stay present.
Foreign governments, we are inevitably going to run into classified information about what new systems and technologies we do know are in the works here or abroad. But where information does not risk national security, it should be shared with allies and the public when feasible.
About Congress, it's having the first public hearing about UFOs.
Continue to try to determine the nature of UAPs we've observed.
Think about that, that's insane. There's even, there was even a class, classified meeting just like this today.
Community on this topic.
God knows what happened there.
Gentlemen, yield is back, and now turn to our distinguished chairman, Adam Schiff, for any comments he wishes to make.
Thank you Chairman Carson, uh, for holding this open hearing on unidentified aerial phenomenon and for your leadership on this issue. Holding a portion of our discussion today in open session is critical to the cause of transparency and openness, which was Congress's intent in authorizing and funding this new task force. The larger effort that is being undertaken to study and characterize UAP reports is an important step towards understanding these phenomenon, what we know and don't know.
My camera is set up in just a way, like I'm, I'm, I'm on a hill. I'm on a steep hill, the driveway is a steep hill. I really hope the camera doesn't fall.
UAP reports have been around decades, and yet we haven't had an orderly way for them to be reported without stigma and to be investigated. That needs to change. UAP reports need to be understood as a national security matter.
It's weird that they call UFOs, UAPs now, but
US government. When we spot something we don't understand or can't identify in our airspace, it's the job of those we entrust with our national security to investigate and to report back. That is why it's important that we hold this open hearing for the public to hear directly from the Department of Defense on the steps it's taking to track, analyze, and transparently communicate.
If you check out my JA Unknown channel, one of my other YouTube channels, we'll be covering like UFOs and alien-like topics, way more so on there, but like, uh, for this video, it had to go on the main channel. This, this is big, this is big. This is literally historic, but someone has made eyes on this video as possible. I don't know if this is a reaction or review, but
You gentlemen, for your work, and be very interested to hear what you have to say. To me, among the most fascinating questions, are these phenomenon that we can measure? That is, uh, instruments report there is something there. It's not the human eye confusing objects in the sky. Uh, there is something there measurable by multiple instruments, and yet it seems to move in directions that are inconsistent with what we know of physics or science more broadly. And
Yeah, I know this.
That to me poses questions of, of tremendous interest and, uh, as well as potential national security significance. So we look forward to hearing what you're able to report to us today in open session. And I want to thank Chairman Carson again for his extraordinary leadership on this issue, and I yield back.
Chairman yields back. Thank you. With that, we will start our hearing. Under Secretary Multry, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Chairman Schiff, uh, Committee Chairman Carson, Ranking Member Crawford, distinguished members of the subcommittee. It's a privilege to be here with you today to address your questions regarding unidentified aerial phenomenon or UAP. I'm pleased to be joined by Mr. Scott Bray, the Deputy Director of Naval Intelligence, who will speak to the Navy's Unidentified Aerial Phenomenon Task Force, which laid the foundation for the efforts we will discuss today. First, I'd like to thank Congress for supporting the department's UAP efforts. The NDAA for fiscal year twenty twenty two has helped us to establish a dedicated office to oversee processes and procedures for the timely collection, processing, analysis, and reporting of UAP-related data. What are UAP? Put simply, UAP are airborne objects that when encountered cannot be immediately identified. However, it is the department's contention that by combining appropriately structured collected data with rigorous scientific analysis, any object that we encounter can likely be isolated, characterized, identified, and if necessary, mitigated. We know that our service members have encountered unidentified aerial phenomenon. And because UAPs pose potential flight safety and general security risks, we are committed to a focused effort to determine their origins. Our effort will include the thorough examination of adversarial platforms and potential breakthrough technologies, US government or commercial platforms, allied or partner systems, and other natural phenomenon. We also understand that there has been a cultural stigma surrounding UAP. Our goal is to eliminate the stigma by fully incorporating our operators and mission personnel into a standardized data gathering process. We believe that making UAP reporting a mission imperative will be instrumental to the effort's success. The Defense Intelligence and Security Enterprise provides real-time support to our warfighters and mission personnel across all domains. To optimize the department's UAP work, we are establishing an office within this Office of the Secretary of Defense. That office's function is clear. To facilitate the identification of previously unknown or unidentified airborne objects in a methodical, logical, and standardized manner.
Good.
These goals will ensure that we are working closely with operational personnel on training and reporting requirements, developing data and intelligence requirements, standardizing and integrating processes.
It's fucking creepy that the government, our military, is just straight up, it's just like, yeah, there's vehicles flying around. We're not, at least, yeah, there appears to be some vehicles flying around of unknown origin and we don't know. We're working on trying to figure out
This effort will maximize
what we can now. It's just like, wait, what?
With the Office of the Director of National Intelligence, the FAA, DHS, and the FBI. We are also committed to strong partnerships with the Department of Energy, NOAA, the DEA, NASA, and the National Labs, and just as importantly, our international partners and allies. With regard to the importance of transparency, the department is fully committed to the principle of openness and accountability to the American people. However, we are also mindful of our obligation to protect sensitive sources and methods. Our goal is to strike that delicate balance, one that enables us to maintain the public's trust while preserving those capabilities that are vital to the support of our service personnel. In closing, the department is committed to this effort and welcomes the challenge. We thank you for your committed support and look forward to your questions.
I wish I could ask me some fucking questions in there.
Chairman Schiff, Chairman Carson, Ranking Member Crawford, and committee members, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today to highlight the ongoing work of the Department of Defense regarding unidentified aerial phenomena. Since the early two thousands, uh, we have seen an increasing number of unauthorized and/or unidentified aircraft or objects in military-controlled training areas, uh, and training ranges and other designated airspace. Reports of sightings are frequent and continuing. We attribute this increase in reporting to a number of factors, including our work to de-stigmatize reporting, an increase in the number of new systems such as quadcopters and unmanned aerial systems that are in our airspace, uh, identification of what we can classify as clutter, Mylar balloons, and other types of, uh, of air trash, and improvements in the capabilities of our various sensors to detect things in our airspace. Almost two years ago in August of twenty twenty, Deputy Secretary of Defense Nordquist directed the establishment of the Unidentified Aerial Phenomena Task Force within the Department, uh, of the Navy. The UAP Task Force was built on the foundation of the Navy's initial efforts to respond to the reports from our aviators on unidentified objects observed in our training ranges. The basic issues then and now are twofold. First, incursions in our training ranges by unidentified objects represent serious hazards to safety of flight. In every aspect of naval aviation, safety of our air crews is paramount. Second, intrusions by unknown aircraft or objects pose potential threats to the security of our operations. Our aviators train as they would fight. So any intrusions that may compromise the security of our operations by revealing our capabilities, our tactics, techniques, or procedures uh, are of great concern, uh, to the Navy and the Department of Defense. From the very beginning, we took these reports very seriously. We instituted a data-driven approach to the investigations where we could collect as much data as possible and use all available resources to analyze and make informed decisions on the best ways to address our findings. Our main objective was to transition UAP efforts from an anecdotal or narrative-based, uh, approach to a rigorous science and technology engineering-focused study. The data-driven approach, uh, requires input from a wide variety of sources. Uh, in the early stages, uh, the task force worked to standardize the reporting mechanisms and processes to make it as easy as possible uh, for personnel to report any engagement, so that we were getting that wide range of reporting that we needed. We also spent considerable efforts engaging directly with our naval aviators and building relationships to help de-stigmatize the act of reporting sightings or encounters. And we worked with naval aviation leadership to provide additional equipment to record any encounter. Navy and Air Force crews now have step-by-step procedures for reporting on a UAP on their kneeboard, uh, in their, in the cockpit and, uh, in their post-flight debrief procedures. The direct result of those efforts has been increased reporting with increased opportunities to focus the number
God damn, they're just being told to like, listen, if you see, if you see a UAP, watch out, like, damn.
And the message has been received. In fact, recently, I received a call from a senior naval aviator with over two thousand flight hours. He called me personally from the flight line, uh, after landing, uh, to talk about, uh, an encounter that he had just experienced. Those were just the initial steps. We also made a concerted effort to assemble subject matter experts from across the Department of Defense and the intelligence community and other US government agencies and departments. We forged partnerships with the research, development, and acquisition communities, with industry partners, and with academic research labs, and we brought many allies and international partners into our discussions on UAP. Additionally, subject matter experts from a wide variety, uh, of fields, including physics, optics, metallurgy, meteorology, uh, just to name a few, have been brought in to, uh, uh, to expand our understanding in areas where we may not have organic expertise. In short, we've endeavored to bring an all-hands-on-deck approach, uh, to the, to better understand this phenomenon. So what have we learned so far? Any given observation may be fleeting or longer. It may be recorded or not. It may be observable by one or multiple assets. In short, there's rarely an easy answer. For example, let me share with you the first video that we have here today, which shows an observation in real time. There it was. That's, in many cases
I'm shooting the, I'm just shooting the video. Yeah.
And in many other cases, we have far less than this. As we detailed in both the unclassified and classified versions of the preliminary assessment released by the Office of the Director of National Intelligence last June, this often limited amount of high-quality data, uh, and reporting hampers our ability to draw firm conclusions about the nature or intent of UAP. As detailed in the ODNI report, if and when individual UAP incidents are resolved, they likely fall into one of five potential explanatory categories: airborne clutter, natural atmospheric phenomena, US government or US industry developmental programs, foreign adversary systems,
I think that's the first time that videos have been shown.
That allows for a whole different set of different cases and for the possibility of surprise and potential scientific discovery. We stand by those initial results. Since the release of that preliminary report, the UAP Task Force database has now grown to contain approximately four hundred reports. The stigma has been reduced. We've also made progress in resolving the character of a limited number of UAP encounters. For example, let me show you a couple of, uh, another video and image, uh, taken years apart in different areas.
Let's go.
In this video, US Navy personnel recorded what appears to be triangles, some flashing, recorded several years ago off the coast of the United States. This was recorded while the US Navy ship, uh, observed a number of small unmanned aerial systems, uh, in the area. And importantly, the video was taken through night vision goggles with a single lens reflex camera. These remained unresolved for several years.
Yeah, I've seen this. It might not have been this exact video, but I've seen footage like this. This video seems a bit different.
Several years later, and off a different coast, US Navy personnel, again, in a swarm of unmanned aerial systems, and again, through night vision goggles and an SLR camera, uh, recorded this image. But this time, other US Navy assets also observed unmanned aerial systems nearby. And we're now reasonably confident that these triangles correlate the unmanned aerial systems in the area. The triangular appearance is a result of light passing through the night vision goggles and then being recorded by an SLR camera. I don't mean to suggest that everything that we observe, uh, is, is identifiable, but, um, the, um, uh, it, but this is a great example of how it takes considerable effort to understand what we're seeing, uh, in the examples that we are able to collect. Um, in this example, we accumulated sufficient data from two similar encounters from two different time periods in two different geographic areas to help us draw the, these conclusions. That's not always the case, though. We recognize that that can be unsatisfying or insufficient in the eyes of many. This is a popular topic, uh, in our nation with various theories as to what these objects may be and where they originate. By nature, we are all curious and we seek to understand the unknown. And as a lifelong intelligence professional, I'm impatient. I want immediate explanations for this as much as anyone else. However, understanding can take significant time and effort. It's why we've endeavored to concentrate on this data-driven process to derive fact-based results. And given the nature of our business, national defense, we've had to sometimes be less forthcoming with information in open forums than many would hope. If UAP do indeed represent a potential threat to our security, then the capabilities, systems, processes, and sources we use to observe, record, study, or analyze these phenomena need to be classified at appropriate levels. We do not want, we do not want potential adversaries to know exactly what we're able to see or understand or how we come to the conclusions we make. Therefore, public disclosures must be carefully considered on a case-by-case basis. So what's next? We're concentrating on a seamless transition to the new organization. And future analysis of complicated, uh, issues of, uh, UAP issues will greatly benefit from the infrastructure of the process and the procedures that we've developed to date. I'm confident that the task force under Navy leadership has forged a path forward that will allow us to anchor assessments in science and engineering vice anecdotal evidence. We remain committed to that goal, as I know the USDI, um, uh, organization does as well. So thank you very much for your interest, uh, in continuing support for the UAP Task Force. The team's made a lot of progress, but we really are just establishing the foundation, uh, for the more detailed analysis that's yet to be done. With your continued support
Yeah, we definitely need a much more detailed analysis of whatever the fuck is being seen out there. What, what the fuck was that first video that he showed?
This is the third version of this task force.
It looks like, I, I need to watch this on laptop. I didn't blow my nose. Lord, Lord, help me, but it was like a, like an orb flew by? What?
Sweeping concerns about UAPs under the rug by focusing on events that can be explained and avoiding events that cannot be explained.
Fuck.
What can you, what, 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 what can you say to give the American
He was like, there wasn't a lot there. It's like, sir.
Confidence that you aren't just focusing
All right, thing in my face.
Low-hanging fruit with easy explanations.
Congressman, I'll start and then, uh, Mr. Bray, um, please feel free to, uh, to weigh in. So the way that we're approaching this is with a, a more thorough standardized methodology in what we have in the past. First and foremost, the Secretary of Defense is chartering this effort. This is not, uh, someone lower in the Department of Defense. And he has assigned that task to the Office of Secretary of Defense, uh, the, uh, Undersecretary for Intelligence and Security, that's me, because I'm responsible for looking at intelligence matters, I'm responsible for security matters, this is potentially both. So when you start, um, concerning the, um, the ourselves with the safety of our personnel, the, the safety of our installations and bases, there's no other higher priority than what we have than actually getting after this. And, and as you have stated, we have been, uh, assigned that task to actually stand up an office, the AIM-SOG, which I believe the name, sir, will likely change. But we have moved forward in terms of moving to establish that office. We have, uh, as of this week, um, picked a director for that effort, uh, very established and, um, and, uh, accomplished individual. We've identified spaces, we've, uh, worked with personnel across the Department of Defense with the services, and we've worked with the IC, which is on board and helping us work through this standardized methodology.
My man came correct.
Bringing in data, analyzing that data, and reporting that data in the appropriate method and appropriate means so we can either get it to our service personnel to ensure their safety, or get it to you and the Congress and to the public to ensure that you have oversight to what we're doing. So charter by the Secretary of Defense, standardize, and, uh, really a methodical approach. It's something that we're doing that has not been done before.
Can we get some kinds of assurances that, uh, your analysts will follow the facts where they lead and, and assess all hypotheses?
Aliens?
So we're open to all hypotheses, we're open to any, uh, conclusions that, uh, that we may encounter.
Uh, quickly, before I pass it to the Ranking Member, um, and, and Chairman Schiff, uh, I want to thank you both for taking the time and, and I had a good time meeting with you last week, uh, Director Multry, Undersecretary Mul-
This is insane, bro.
It's fair to say that you are a science fiction fan, is that correct?
It is fair to say that, uh, I am an inquisitive mind who has, uh, spent forty years in the intelligence field and has focused on both science and science fiction. That is fair.
Could you tell us about it?
Yeah, well, yeah, look, my generation grew up, uh, looking at, um, space sagas and, and the Apollo program. So all of us who grew up in the sixties, uh, were, were just thrilled by watching, um, our first astronaut land on the moon. That was a momentous occasion to people who were of different generations, uh, some of them didn't believe that had happened. I still have relatives and friends who don't believe it happened, right? Science fiction to them. But to us, it was, no, that's the progress that we've made. And so I was enthralled by that and I've taken that to heart. I enjoy, um, uh, the challenge of what may be out there. I have mentioned to you that, uh, yes, I have followed science fiction, I have gone to conventions, even, I'll say it on the record, uh, uh, gotta break the ice somehow. But, uh, you know, I, I have done that, right? But there's nothing wrong with that. Um, don't necessarily dress up, but I do, uh, you know, I do believe that it's important to show that the Department of Defense has, um, you know, we have character. And we're people just like you, just like the American people. We have our, um, we have our, um, our inquisitiveness. Uh, we have our questions. We want to know what's out there as much as you want to know what's out there. We get the questions, not just
I don't know that, I don't know that's true.
We get them night and day, uh, not just in committee hearings. So finding what's out there is important, but first and foremost, uh, foremost, it's important for us to do that so we can ensure that our people, our personnel, our aviators, our bases and installations are safe. Um, and then that curiosity factor is something else that, uh, that we just want to know because that's the human race. It's just, you know, that insatiable desire to know.
Thank you, sir, Ranking Member.
Listen, I, what the fuck, first off, if the If, if there really are extraterrestrial vehicles out there. It's possible no one in this room knows for certain about that. That's how top secret it could be.
And thank you.
You know what I mean? Like it It's like four D chess going on.
Objects in our sensitive operating areas is tantamount to an intelligence failure that we certainly want
I mean, obviously, we don't know what's going, what's flying around out there, but like
Delivering dominant intelligence across the tactical operational
I think some of them could be aliens.
How can AIM-SOG lead to prevention of intelligence surprises?
Sure, I'll start with that.
It sounds crazy.
The goal of our effort is to integrate it into what we already do on a normal basis, which is look for the unknown, unknowns, Congressman, as you stated in your opening remarks, across all domains. So we've been doing this for decades. We've been looking at the space domain, looking at space objects, looking at space weather, looking at space phenomenon. Uh, we've been looking at things in the air domain and we, as you know, we, um, and I'll talk more about this in classified session. But we have a very concerted effort to understand adversarial platforms and adversarial developmental programs. And we do that also in the ground domain, and of course, we're very interested in what happens in the, um, in the underwater or sea domain, if you will, subsurface domain. So if there are objects that our, uh, aviators or air crews are encountering in this air domain and their sensors are, um, and their sensors are, um, are discovering or detecting some of these objects, we want to just bring that in to the normal process that we have for identifying unknown unknowns. We want to make sure we have the intelligence requirements that allow us not only to look at that event from the time that it occurs forward, but maybe retrospectively, we want to go back and see if we can get to the left of that event to say, was there some developmental program that we, to get to your technical surprise, uh, issue, sir, that we should have known about? And if so, how do we put that, uh, intelligence requirement in place to ensure that we are following an adversarial development or any other development that may be out there? So that's what we, we want to do in terms of normalizing this and bringing it into the normal process of how we identify unknown unknowns.
So you mentioned fidelity, and, and I think it's important to talk about the relationship from, the Navy is the lead agency on this, uh, how do you interact with um, Space Force, Air Force, to create that degree of fidelity with common sensors and so on? And I guess where I have some concerns, that many of the images that we see commonly, um, in, in this committee and even in open source, the resolution and the clarity, um, that would allow a, a robust technical intelligence analysis is challenging. So is AIMSOG, um, prepared to address the quality and, and quantity of data collected on UAP to advance intelligence collection, and do you have the adequate sensors you need to collect that high-quality data?
Get more sensors.
One of the lines of effort that we have is looking at our sensor capabilities and to understand whether or not, as the video showed that Mr. Bray, um, displayed, uh, sometimes it's very fleeting, uh, data that we have on some of these objects. And, and we want to make sure that, one, uh, our systems are calibrated, uh, to actually be able to collect on the objects. You know, our sensors today are, they're calibrated for specific things, we want to make sure to calibrate it for things of this nature, things of this size, things of this velocity, if I can use that term. We want to make sure that, once we have that, that that data is stored in some standardized method that we can then extract and that we can feed into our system real time. So we do not, like, want this to take some, uh, prolonged period of time for us to get that data. But our goal is absolutely to have that high fidelity information that we get from all sensors, and we want to be able to integrate that with what we may have off of ground-based sensors. So whatever you may have on a platform, whatever you may have on the ground, whatever you may have from, um, other sensors that we may have in different domains. We want to be able to integrate that all and get this integrated picture as we would, as I said, with any other unidentified objects or things that we are tracking, um, as a part of our normal intelligence responsibilities.
They seem confident that they're objects and not like some-
Uh, I'm a Navy pilot, I've, um, encountered a UAP. Walk me through the reporting protocol, um, once I see something that I think needs reporting.
Uh, the first thing that that aviator would do, uh, after landing is a part of, uh, their normal, uh, debriefing is they would, uh, contact their, uh, intelligence officer. Their intelligence officer would then, uh, walk them through, uh, first filing a, first, actually, data preservation to en, to ensure that, uh, that whatever sensor data, uh, may be on the aircraft, that we preserve that, um, so that it's available for, for later analysis. Um, second, they would actually fill out a, uh, a form, uh, that, uh, that includes details like where they were operating, altitudes they were operating, speeds, what they observed, uh, whatever sensor data, sensor data they, uh, may have reported from that. Uh, and then that report, uh, is filed, it goes two places. One, it goes through, um, through the operational, uh, chain of command so that operational units are aware of what, uh, what's being observed, and also, uh, to the UAP Task Force so that they can take that data, uh, database it, uh, and quite often, uh, have individuals from the Task Force, uh, contact the aviator, uh, and ask them additional questions if there were things that weren't clear, uh, in the, uh, in the report. Uh, that then goes into a, um, uh, into a, a database, uh, where we begin to compare it with other, um, observations that we have. Again, comparing for locations, comparing for altitude, speeds, shapes, uh, if any RF emissions were detected from the platform, uh, all of that, so that we can try to reach some conclusions on that.
Thank you, you're back.
Gentleman yields back, Chairman Schiff.
Thanks, Chairman.
That was a very interesting answer.
Can we run that first, uh, image? It looked like it was outside of a plane window. Um, and if you, you wouldn't mind going up to the screen and tell us what we're, what we're seeing? I, not that you can necessarily tell us what we're seeing, but explain what we should be looking at in that first image.
Absolutely.
I'll bet.
And Alexi, what I'll ask is if you can stop it at a certain point.
Bet. They're using VLC. I guess not that I should be surprised, but... Wait, what? What is happening? Play that back, dog.
And are we looking outside of a, uh, civilian aircraft window? Is that what we're looking at? Okay.
What the fuck? Was that? Yeah, I, I need to see this on a laptop, but in fairness, this was the only way and time I could record this video. Especially this long of a- Oh, fuck. No one, no one knows how to use VLC? Isn't there one?
Is that it right there? Uh, can you point to the screen again, what we're supposed to be looking at?
Never seen this video before. Holy shit. I wonder if this is online, and if not, when will it be online? Cause what the fu, yeah, what the fuck was that? What was that? This is hilarious. No one knows how to use a fucking-
Okay, if you could stop that frame?
You would think they would have pre-thought these video player issues, but...
Here's what you'll see coming up right here, is it there, my? Now back up just a- Spherical object, right here, zooms by the window, uh, right in this area, right there. There we go. Could you see that part right there again, going by? I think we're having a hard time stopping at the right spot.
He just says spherical object just flew by, and it's completely unknown what the fuck it was.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's difficult, that kind of part of the issue here. Um, the laptop we're working with, uh, is not as easy for us stopping that video in the right spot.
We'll, we'll describe what, what we have seen in that, uh, what are we observing?
Uh, what you see here, uh, is, um, uh, aircraft that is, uh, operating in a, uh, uh, in a US Navy, uh, training range, uh, that has observed, uh, spherical object uh, in that area. Uh, and as they fly by it, they take a video, you see, uh, um, it looks, uh, reflective in this video, somewhat reflective, uh, and it quickly passes by uh, the cockpit of the, uh, of the aircraft.
And is this one of the phenomena that we can't explain?
I do not have an explanation for what this, this specific, uh, object is.
And, and is this one of the situations where it is, that's, that's the object that we're looking at right there? Thank you. Um, and is this a situation where-
What the fuck?
It was observed by the pilot and it was also recorded by the aircraft's instruments?
Uh, we'll talk about the multi-sensor part, uh, in a later session, uh, but in this case, uh-
Talk about it now!
At least that.
Um, in, in the Director of National Intelligence, uh, 2021 unclassified report, um, the OD and I reported a hundred and forty-four UAPs between 2004 and 2021, uh, eighty percent of which were, uh, recorded on multiple instruments. Um, and I take it with respect to some of those, you had the pilot, a pilot seeing them, it was observed by a pilot, and you had multiple instruments recording it. So you really have three sensors, the human sensor and two, uh, technical, uh, sensors detecting the object, is that?
For the, for the majority of, uh, uh, incidents that we had in the, uh, last year's report, uh, the majority had multi-sensor data. Uh, when I talk about the four hundred reports that we have now, uh, that number will certainly go down because a lot of those, uh, new reports that we have are actually historic reports that are narrative-based. So that percentage will go down just as a factor of, uh, the fact that the, that the destigmatization has resulted in more narrative reports.
And, and that's the object we're looking at right there now, right?
That's it, right there.
Okay. Um, last year's report also said that of those hundred and forty-four, eighteen of them uh, reportedly appeared to exhibit unusual flight characteristics, appear to demonstrate advanced technology, uh, and some of them appeared to remain stationary in winds aloft, move against the wind, maneuver abruptly, or move at considerable speed without discernible means of propulsion. Um, that's pretty intriguing. Uh, uh, and, and if you're able to answer this, uh, in this setting, are we aware of any, uh, foreign adversary capable of moving objects, uh, without any discernible means of propulsion?
Um, I think I would, uh, without discernible means of propulsion, I would say that, uh, we're not aware of any adversary that can move an object without discernible means of propulsion. Uh, the question then becomes, in many of these cases, where we don't have a discernible mean of propulsion in the data that we have. Um, in some cases, uh, um, there is likely sensor artifacts, uh, that, uh, that, that may be hiding some of that. Uh, there's certainly some degree of, uh, of something that looks like signature management that we have seen from some of these, uh, uh, UAP. Uh, but I would, I would caution, I would simply say that there are a number of, uh, of events in which we do not have an explanation. In which, and there are a small handful in which there are flight characteristics or signature management, um, that we can't explain with the data that we have. Um, we'll continue, those are obviously the ones that are of most interest to us. Uh, earlier when we asked about how you, uh, avoid technological surprise, the biggest way you avoid technological surprise is by collecting this type of data, and by importantly, um, calibrating the assumptions that you go into with how you do that analysis. I'll tell you, within the UAP Task Force, we have, uh, one basic assumption. And that is that generally speaking, generally speaking, our sensors operate as designed. Um, and we make that assumption because many times these are multi-sensor, uh, collections. We make no assumptions about, uh, the origin of this, uh, or that there may or may not be some sort of technology that we don't understand. That's, I think, the key to avoiding technological surprises by calibrating those assumptions.
And finally, um, with respect to the second two videos, uh, showing the small triangles, um, the hypothesis is that those are, uh, commercial drones that, uh, because of the use of night vision goggles appear like triangles, is that the operating assessment?
Some type of, uh, of drone, uh, some type of, uh, of unmanned aerial system, uh, and it is simply that that light source, uh, resolves itself through the, um, uh, through the night vision goggles onto the SLR camera as a triangle.
And have we, in order to prove that hypothesis, uh, flown a drone, uh, and observed it with that same technology to see whether we can re, reproduce the effect?
UAP Task Force is aware of studies that have done that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Dr. Winster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here. Um, my first question is, uh, throughout this process where there's been sightings, have the sightings been stationary, or have they always been sighted from a moving object? From a plane or a ship that may be moving? Have these reports ever come from a stationary object being observed in the sky?
The UAP Task Force does have, uh, reports from stationary, uh, from sta, reports from a stationary observer.
There's a difference observing something when you're moving as well, it's physics, right? Is that why I asked that question? Uh, are we capable, or have we made any breakthroughs, or anyone made any breakthroughs, to be able to cite something and make some determination at all of its composition? Whether it's a solid or a gas? Uh, do, is there any such, uh, capability?
Um, from-
Not asking what, I just-
Right, from, from some of the returns, I mean, it, it's clear that, uh, that the majority, well, it's clear that many of the observations we have are physical objects, uh, from the, the sensor data that we have.
That, well, gas is physical, is a physical object, it can be, and so, and you, you see where I'm going with this, I'm trying to determine what it is we're looking at, so if we can decide if something is a solid or a gas, and, and if there'd been any conclusion on its capabilities, like its capabilities of, of movement, uh, of turning, uh, going, you know, a hundred and eighty degrees or ninety-degree turn, anything along that line that we've been able to determine?
Um, within the, and again, I should point out that, uh, you know, that there is not a single explanation for UAP, they are, make up, there are a lot of different things, uh, that, that are unidentified aerial phenomena.
Basically, it, we really don't know much on that, that's, that's all I'm trying to get at. We-
Sounds like we have no idea.
Protocol right now for our, our military, but are there any non-military reports coming forward of similar events? Or is it all coming from military?
Uh, the UAP Task Force has a very good working relationship, uh, with the FAA. Uh, they have very good working relationship with other parts, uh, of the US government, so that we can ingest reports-
The majority of them?
Do we have any-
Are flying objects?
Yes, thank you, that's, that's, that's my question. Um, and do we need to put out protocol for civilians that may be in that arena, like through FAA? Do you think that would be appropriate and helpful?
I think standardized, the, reporting without a doubt is key to helping us get to the, to ascertain what some of these are.
I think it would be important as well. Uh, do we, um, there are other people besides, uh, the US that have had these experiences and reported them? Is that correct?
There are, that's correct.
Uh, is it, uh, all of our allies, or is it allies and adversaries? What have we learned publicly?
So some of that, I think, sir, we'll save for closed session.
Well, that goes my next question, publicly have others that made anything which would not have to be considered closed? I don't want you to answer what they've said necessarily.
Allies have, uh, have seen these, China has established its own version of a UAP Task Force, so, uh, clearly a number of countries have observations of, uh, of things in the airspace that they can't identify.
And, uh,
I bet.
Do we share data with some, with all? Are they sharing with us?
We share data with some and some share data with us.
But not necessarily all that have publicly reported something?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I think that's a, i- an important thing, and for the other session, actually, that we, we don't discuss that now. Um, because, you know, obviously, something like this can be a national security challenge for us, and no doubt about it. If they're developed by an adversary, um, through some breakthrough technology, they can be very disruptive to our military actions, uh, or at least serve as a disruption.
I mean, obviously, most UAP UFOs can be explained away, but you know why I'm here, you know why most of us are here. We're talking about them ones, and dog. This is, this is weirdly exciting and creepy at the same time, cause it's that unknown factor.
Chairman.
Like, I, I know, like, I know, like Mick West and a lot of people who think exactly like him are probably bored to tears watching something like this, but there's that unknown factor for me.
Women reporting this, it's obviously really very serious because-
You know how I feel about the subject.
Should one of our adversaries have developed a technology that we don't know about it, we need to know about it yesterday, and, and obviously, uh, any sort of stigma that prevents our, our, uh, military from reporting this data as comprehensively as possible is a national security threat. So, uh, I really just have two questions in the service of that goal. Uh, the first is, um, the chairman asked that we run that video again. Most people, when they see a video, we're, we're all used to wa, seeing things from a car, seeing things from a sidewalk. Very few people have the experience of observing something through night vision goggles at Mach one point five. So just talk for a minute about, if you would, uh, whichever of you is most appropriate, how radically different observation is at high speed and three dimensions- different observation is at high speed in three dimensions than it is for most of us who walk around and drive cars?
So the first thing I think that's important to note about this is there are lots of things, when you are moving very fast, and an object is between you and a stationary reference point like the ground, it gives a lot of different impressions about how quickly something is or isn't moving. And it actually means that it is a challenge, especially with narrative-based data, to get a lot of information on that. That's why the sensor data is so important, because things do happen very quickly, as you see there. And sometimes things that happen very quickly, something may be moving very slow. That aircraft is moving quite fast. How fast that object is moving that goes by is probably very slow.
So I guess, I guess my point is that an observation, either a visual observation or a, a electronic observation, infrared or whatever, looks radically different than it does to most people. Even instruments, instruments are on gimbals and that sort of thing, so that creates a very unusual view to, again, those of us who are used to seeing things on, in two dimensions largely. Second question, I think, Mr. Bray, you said something that I want to unpack a little bit. A number of these UAPs, you said, "we can't explain." Again, in the service of sort of reducing speculation and conspiracy theories, "we can't explain" can range from a visual observation that was distant on a foggy night, we don't know what it is, to we've found an organic material that we can't identify, right? Those are radically different worlds, worlds. So when you say "we can't explain," give the public a little bit better sense of where on that spectrum of "we can't explain" we are. Are we holding materials, organic or inorganic, that we don't know about? Are we, you know, picking up emanations?
They don't know.
Other than light or infrared that could be...
It's literally as creepy as it sounds.
Sure. When I say "we can't explain," I mean exactly as you described there, that there is a lot of information, like the video that we showed, in which there's simply too little data to, to create a reasonable explanation. There are a small handful of cases in which we have more data, that our analysis simply hasn't been able to, to fully pull together a picture of what happened. The, and those are the cases where we talk about where we see some indications of flight characteristics or signature management that are not what we had expected. When it comes to material that we have, we have no material, we have detected no emanations within the UAP Task Force that, that is, that would suggest it's anything non-terrestrial in origin. So there's, when I say unexplained, I mean everything from too little, too little data, to we simply, the data that we have doesn't point us towards an explanation, but we'll go wherever the data takes us. Again, we've made no assumptions about what this is or isn't. We're committed to understanding these, and so we'll go wherever that data takes us.
Thank, thank you, that's, that's very helpful.
Okay, well, if it takes us to extraterrestrials, I'm gonna piss my pants.
When you say "we can't explain," everything that you can't explain is in a bucket called "data." Is that correct? And that would mean data collected by sensors, visual observations, everything that "we can't explain," quote unquote, is in a bucket called "data."
Right. A narrative report from, from the early two thousands, if it just had a little bit of information on it, would be in our database and it would be unresolved.
I, I would add to that, it's insufficient data. I mean, that's one of the challenges we have. Insufficient data either on the event itself, the object itself, or insufficient data or plugin with some other organization or agency that may have had something in that space.
This is so fucking weird.
It's a data issue that we're, that we're facing to many of these instances, Congressman.
Understood, thank you very much.
In a way, things are happening fast, like the, the JRE Bob Lusar interview was in twenty nineteen.
The witness's testimony.
That New York Times bombshell, ATIP, this was twenty seventeen, like, so we're starting to ramp up. That preliminary report last June.
And in other places that we have more, have more recent projects, specifically ATIP. Could you describe any other initiatives that the DOD or DOD contractors have managed after Project Blue Book ended and prior to ATIP beginning? Did anything also predate Project Blue Book?
So I, I can't speak to what may have predated Project Blue Book.
Like he would tell you.
Of course, as Roswell and all these other things that people have talked about over the years. I'm familiar with Blue Book, I'm familiar with, with ATIP. I haven't seen other documented studies that have been done by DOD in that regard.
So you're not aware of anything in between Project Blue Book and ATIP?
Not aware of anything that's official, that was done in between those two. Hasn't been brought to my attention.
Okay. Additionally, are you aware of any other DOD or DOD contract programs focused on UAPs from a technological engineering perspective? And by that, I mean, are you aware of any technology initiatives focused on this topic other than initiatives focused on the individual case investigations?
I am not aware of any contractual programs that are focused on any, anything related to this, other than what we are doing in the Navy Task Force.
Bro, there's, I'm telling you, there's some kind of program that's like above, above top secret, somewhere.
Same answer, not aware of anything outside what we are doing in the UAP Task Force. So just to confirm, you're not aware of any technology, engineering resources on these efforts besides what we've mentioned today?
Once again, I'll say no contractual or programmatic efforts that are involved. The reason why I, I qualify that, yeah, let me qualify it that way. I, I can't speak to what people may be looking at in the department. Somebody says, "I'm looking at something, I'm looking at something that may be unidentified," and I can't speak to that, speak to official programs that we have on the record.
It's also been reported that there have been UAP observed and interacting with and flying over sensitive military facilities, particularly, not just ranges, but some facilities housing our strategic nuclear forces. One such incident allegedly occurred
Malmstrom.
At Malmstrom Air Force Base, in which ten of our nuclear ICBMs were rendered inoperable. At the same time, a glowing red orb was observed overhead. I'm not commenting on the accuracy of this, I'm simply asking you whether you're aware of it, and whether you have any comment on the accuracy of that report.
Let me pass that to Mr. Bray.
He passed that off quick.
That data is not within the holdings of the UAP Task Force. Okay, but are you aware of the, the report, or that the data exists somewhere? I have, I have heard stories, I have not seen the official data on that. So you've just seen informal stories, no official assessment that you've done or exists within DOD that you're aware of regarding the Malmstrom incident? All I can speak to is, you know, what's within my cognizance of the UAP Task Force, and we have not looked at that incident. Well, well, I would say, I mean, it's a pretty high-profile incident. I don't claim to be an expert on this, but that's out there, in the ether. You're, you're the guys investigating it, I mean, who else is doing it?
If something was officially brought to our attention, we would look at it. There are many things that are out there in the ether that aren't officially brought to our attention.
So how would it have to be officially brought to your attention? I'm bringing it to your attention. This is pretty official.
Sure. So we'll go back and take a look at it, but generally, there is some authoritative figure that says there is an incident that occurred, we'd like you to look at this.
Did he say we might be able to take a look at an, at an incident, or incidents, where UFOs were seen over nuclear sites, turning off nukes?
I don't think we have a resource to do that right now.
Well, I don't claim to be an authoritative figure, but for what it's worth, I would like you to look in, into it, and if for another reason, you could dismiss it and say this is not worth wasting resources.
How they, how they not looked in?
Finally, are you aware of a document that appeared around two thousand and nineteen, sometimes called the Admiral Wilson Memo or E W Notes Memo?
No.
I am, I'm not.
No.
I'm not personally aware of that.
We don't know.
This is a document, again, I'm not commenting on the veracity, I was hoping you would help me with that, in which a former head of DIA claims to have had a conversation with the Dr. Eric Wilson, and claims to have sort of been made aware of certain contractors or DOD programs that he tried to get fuller access to and was denied access to. So you're not aware of that?
I'm not aware, Congressman.
In my ten seconds remaining, then, I guess I just would ask Mr. Chairman unanimous consent to enter that memo into the record.
Without objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Mr. Kristin Murthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to both of you for appearing today and for your public service.
This is like watching a movie.
First question is, there have been no collisions between any US assets in one of these UAPs, correct?
They haven't had a collision? We've had at least eleven near misses, though.
And maybe we'll talk about those eleven near misses, or any place where there's close proximity. I assume, or tell me if I'm wrong, there's been no attempt, there's no communications or any kind of communication signals that emanate from those objects that we've detected, correct?
That's correct.
And have we attempted to communicate with those objects?
No.
So we don't, we don't even put out a alert saying, you know, "US, you know, identify yourself, you are, you know, within our flight path," or something like that? We, we haven't said anything like that?
We've not put anything out like that. Generally speaking, what, you know, for example, in the video that we showed earlier, it appears to be something that is, you know, unmanned, appears to be something that may or may not be in controlled flight, and so we've not attempted any communication with that.
Okay, so, and I, I assume we've never discharged any armaments against a UAP, correct?
That's correct.
How about wreckage? Have we come across any wreckage of any kind of object that has now been examined by you?
The UAP Task Force doesn't have any wreckage that isn't explainable, that isn't consistent with being of terrestrial origin.
Do we have any sensors underwater to detect on submerged UAPs? Anything that is in the ocean or in the seas?
So I think that would be more appropriately addressed in closed session, sir.
I think one of the biggest questions that, that I have is, we say with a lot of probability, we say they, quote unquote, "probably do represent physical objects," close quote. When we say "probably," is that because we cannot conclusively say that they are physical objects?
In the Task Force report, when, when I say "probably represent physical objects," most of them represent physical objects. There could be some that are more of a, of a meteorological phenomenon, something like that, that may not be a physical object in the, in the sense that most people think of something you could go up in touch.
But the ones where you say most of them represent physical objects, can you say that they are definitely, like, with a hundred percent certainty that they are physical objects?
I can say with certainty that a number of these are physical objects.
Okay, so there, we can't rule out that some of them may not be physical objects?
Some certainly could be a sensor anomaly or something like that. Some could be.
Now, how about with regard to UAPs? We've talked about UAPs on training areas, but obviously, there's some sensor bias, I would think. We, we put sensors in training areas. How about with regards to non-training areas? Do we track what's an open source, and what civilians and others have tracked, and have we found similarities to what they've observed in terms of UAPs in non-training areas to the ones that are in training areas?
The UAP Task Force has worked very hard to, to make sure the data set that we're working with is a, is a data set that we have very good control over that data. So we have some partnerships with FAA so that we get some of that, so we get that reporting in. But if it comes to just, you know, open source reports, or someone says that they saw something, that generally does not make it into our database.
So basically, it sounds like we have a good partnership with FAA, but apart from FAA, we don't have partnerships with other agencies or other entities that might be tracking so that we could enlarge our data set to make comparisons.
But we will. So that's the goal of this next effort, will be to expand that relationship with the, with the rest of government and the interagency, so we can understand what they're seeing, what we're seeing, we can correlate on each of those.
First off, I want to go to this closed, closed meeting.
I think that we're, we might have a bias right now going on with regard to just reporting on UAPs being in training areas when we don't really track what's happening elsewhere. Last question, have our encounters with UAPs altered the development of our, either our offense or, offensive or defensive capabilities, or even our sensory capabilities?
We'd take that for the closed session.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. LaHood.
I want to go to the closed session. Fuck this session. Okay, what y'all keeping? What y'all keeping from me?
Obviously, this topic of UAPs has attracted a lot of interest in, in people that are curious about this, this hearing today. As we talk about, and I would say there's a lot of what I would call amateur interest groups that are involved in the UAP field. My, my question is, when there are unsubstantiated claims or manufactured claims of UAPs or kind of false information that's put out there, what are the consequences for people that are involved with that, or groups that are involved with that?
So one of the concerns that we have is that there are a lot of individuals and groups that are, are putting information out there that, that could be considered to be somewhat self-serving.
How the fuck did they not know about Malmstrom?
We're trying to do what's in the best interest of the Department of Defense, and then two, what's in the best interest of the public.
Substantial specificity about Malmstrom.
Factual-based.
Fucking red orb, turning off nukes? And they're, and they're over here like, "Oh, I'm not really sure what you're talking about, we might look into it," like, what?
It's important because we are attempting, as this hearing has drawn out, to understand, one, what may just be natural phenomenon, two, what may be sensor phenomenology, or things that were happening with sensors, three, what may be legitimate counterintelligence threats to places that we have, or bases, or installations, or security threats to our platforms. And anything that diverts us off of what we have with the resources that have been allocated to us, send us off in these spurious chases and hunts that are just not helpful. And they also help, well, they also contribute to the undermining of the confidence that the Congress and the American people have, that we are trying to get to the root cause of what's happening here, report on that, and then feed that back into our national security apparatus.
Two hundred thousand views in nine hours, this video.
Protect the American people and our allies. So it is harmful, it is hurtful, but hopefully, if we get more information out there, we'll start to lessen the impact of some of those.
That's crazy.
So just taking that a step further, so those misinformation, false narratives manufactured. So what are the consequences? Are there legal consequences? Are there examples that you can give us where people have been held accountable by this misinformation or disinformation?
I, I can't give you, you know, any examples where somebody's been legally held liable for putting something out there, but...
Well, I guess what's the deterrent from people engaging in this activity?
I don't, I don't know. I, I don't have that answer. That's something that, you know, welcome to dialogue with Congress.
It seems to be the answer of the day, I don't know.
Members who, you know, help legislate those laws, to say, what should be the, the legal ramifications that we could use to potentially hold individuals accountable, whether it be citizens or information that might be injected into our media by other forces or other countries, if you will.
And in terms of DODs and, you know, review and analysis in this field, I mean, is there, is there a standard in place when it comes to UAPs? I mean, is there any guidance you look to that's codified in law or otherwise within DOD that, that kind of sets out the standards for UAPs and, and what to look for?
I think that's part of what the, the group that we're standing up now will be chartered to do. We're actually, from my organization, will be looking at policy and standards that we have to come to you and work with you to actually put in place and promulgate across our government.
Thank you, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, I made a follow, I made a follow on the line of questions from Mr. LaHood. Gentlemen, what seems incredibly difficult for you is that there's two almost competing but different narratives. One is, it's, no one knows whether there's extraterrestrial life. It's a big universe, and it would be
There is.
Pretty presumptuous to have a hard and fast conclusion, and then if there is, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that there is some exploration coming here. And that underlies a lot of the reports you get. I think Mr. LaHood was asking about that. People think there must be extraterrestrial life, and it's not at all beyond the pale that there would be a visit here. On the other hand, as the DOD, you have the responsibility to make sure that our national security is protected, and that if there are surveillance drones or active drones that can disable our systems, that has to be analyzed, has to be stopped. So how do you divide the, the, how do you separate your responsibilities where you get all these reports from folks who may be in good faith, maybe not, believe that you should be investigating every possible report of a extraterrestrial incident? I'll start with you, Mr. Mulready.
Sure, indeed, Congressman, and, and thank you for the question. It, it's important that we... It's important that we, as a part of this effort, really build out the relationship that we have with others, including NASA, and for the reasons that you just pointed out. So there are elements in our government that are engaged in looking for life in other places, and they have been doing that for decades. They've been searching for extraterrestrial life. There are astrobiologists who have been doing this, too. We're a part of that same government, and so our goal is not to potentially cover up something if we were to find something. It's to understand what may be out there, examine what, what it may mean for us if there are any, from a defense perspective, any national security implications or ramifications, but then to work with organizations as appropriate, if it's a weather phenomenology with NOAA, if it's a potential for extraterrestrial life or an indication of extraterrestrial life, with someone like NASA.
So the transparency actually is very important...
Completely.
...for public consumption.
Completely.
But we're going to have a classified briefing, and without going into the details of what kinds of secrets that we can't share here, what is it, what are we protecting? I don't know if you can answer this question in this open forum, but in fact, your perception of what it is we have to, quote, protect?
So I think right now, what's really important for us to protect is how we know certain things. So there are a lot of things that we know, whether it be about the thinking of other leaders around the world, the weapon systems that are being developed, or how we detect things that may be threats to us. Many of those things are the result of some of our most sensitive sources and methods, and we'll use those things, not just for this effort, but those same sources and methods are used to help protect us from adversaries and from others who might mean to do us harm. There aren't separate UAP sensors. There's not a separate UAP processing computer. There's not a separate UAP dissemination chain or whatever. So it's the same process. It's the same system that we have that helps us do all that. We need to protect that because this is something that we're looking at, but we're sure there are going to be other things that we'll look at in the future that will need those same sensors, will need those same sources and methods to help us do. So we're protecting the fact of that this nation has developed capabilities that enable us to know what may be threats to us and to counter those threats before they become something of a national issue.
Thank you very much. I want to thank both you, Mr. Bray, and you, Mr. Mulready, for your presence today. I yield back.
Shout out to Mr. Welch.
Gentleman yields back. Beyond videos, is there a range of other information that the executive branch has that would be valuable to the American people while protecting sources and methods, obviously? The details of individual encounters, including the time, place, and details of an encounter? And does the AIM-SOG have a clear and repeatable process for considering public release as part of the process?
Chairman Carson, the...
And do you commit to building that process if it's not in place?
The UAP Task Force, you know, the Security Declassification Guide that the UAP Task Force had been operating under, that I approved, really was meant to protect those sources and methods and meant to protect any knowledge that an adversary intelligence entity may gain from understanding what we're tracking, how we track it, or when we're tracking it or if we're not. And so that has been an important piece in the balance between transparency and preserving our warfighting advantage because the US military does train as it would fight. What I will commit to is, at least for that material that's under my authority as the Deputy Director of Naval Intelligence, for information that we have that does not involve sources and methods, or, and when we can, with a reasonable degree of confidence, determine that it does not pose a foreign intelligence or national security threat, and it's within my authority to do so, I commit to declassifying that. So I believe very much in the transparency of this, and we work very hard to balance that with our national security needs.
I'll just add, Congressman, just over the last three, four months, I think that the, the intelligence community and the national defense apparatus have disclosed more information on various events than it has in probably, see, the previous 10 years. You have our commitment to work closely with the Director of National Intelligence and others in the declassification and downgrading of intel apparatus to ensure that we can get whatever information that we can out to the American people and to the public at large.
Greatly appreciated, sir. Thank you, Member Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Stefanik is en route, I believe, just real quickly, but in the interim, if I could, if you'll indulge me. I just have one, a couple of real small questions. One is, do we have an example? Can you cite a specific example of an object that can't be explained as having been human-made or natural?
I mean, the, the example that I would say that is still unresolved, that I think everyone understands quite well, is the 2004 incident from Nimitz.
Oh, the Nimitz. Yeah, Commander Fravor.
We have data on that, and it simply remains unresolved. Does not mean it resolves to being something, right, that is easily explainable.
Something happened that day.
Well, obviously, it resolves to being something that is difficult to explain, but I can't point to something that definitively was not...
I don't give a fuck what Midwest is saying. Something happened that day.
Remain unresolved.
Gotcha. We've heard of videos that have appeared in open source channels, for example, a Tic-Tac video.
That's a fucking weird one.
Does AIM-SOG maintain control of videos, and how do you prevent leaks of potentially classified videos of that material?
So the AIM-SOG, as we established that organization, we will have a, a process for classified and compartmented holdings, and we will find a way of getting positive control over those. We have our sensitive access program, the special access programs that allow us to put what we call SAPs around things, and then there's controlled access programs that allow us to put CAPs around things. So we'll have that in place. Our goal will be ensuring that we're sharing that with the appropriate analysts and the appropriate exploiters, if you will, who can look at that data, too. What we don't want to do is bring something into a DOD database or a DOD holding and then have so many wrappers around it, it's not available to those who really need to look at it and to exploit it. And that's one of the reasons we're establishing relationships with the interagency, with the IC, and others to be able to do that, sir. But we will do our best to maintain positive control over the materials that we have within our holdings.
Thank you.
Chairman Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to the 2021 report, you know, under the category of "UAP appear to demonstrate advanced technology," those 18 incidents in which some of the UAP appear to remain stationary, winds aloft, move against the wind, maneuver abruptly, or move at considerable speed without discernible means of propulsion. It goes on to say, "In a small number of cases, military aircraft systems processed radio frequency energy associated with UAP sightings." I couldn't tell from that whether that small number of cases was a part of the subset of 18. That is, among the 18 which appeared to move with unusual pattern or flight characteristics, did some of those also emit radio frequency energy?
I would have to check with our UAP Task Force on that. I believe, without getting into specifics that we can do in the, in the closed session, at least some that we have detected RF emissions from were not behaving...
All the juiciest shit is in this fucking closed session.
And the significance of measuring that radio frequency energy is...
I love that the neighborhood is just hearing about UAPs.
...that this was some form of aircraft in which there were radio transmissions.
The biggest thing that you're looking for there is any indication of, of an effort to jam whatever sensors that we may have looking at it.
But I would also add to that, that radio frequency, as you know, Congressman, is used to control various platforms, too. So the fact of emanations coming off of any platform, whether it be a UAV or another platform, could be radio frequency activity related to that entity transmitting out or something transmitting to that platform. And of course, we have a sensitivity with our airborne platforms that picking it up, which is one of the reasons that we try to prevent people from using their cell phones on airplanes and things like that. It's very sensitive to RF emanation. So that's a part of what we'll be looking at in the AIM-SOG. What is this? Is this something that we can collect on, and can we start to characterize the signaling environment around the emanations that may be coming off of some of these UAPs?
So that, that energy, then, that was recorded could be either an effort to jam or it could be an effort to control a UAV, or any other communication with that craft?
I would say that's accurate.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. As the ODNI report makes clear, one possible explanation for UAPs is that we are detecting US aircraft, either secret air programs or even test prototypes. I won't ask you in this setting, obviously, to describe any secret DOD programs. That said, I do want to make sure the US government isn't chasing its own tail. Firstly, do you have a clear and repeatable process to check with compartmented programs about whether a UAP sighting is attributable to a US aircraft? Secondly, do, does the AIM-SOG staff have the clearances and read-ons that they need to investigate all of these incidents?
My camera's about to die, sir.
And thirdly, when your staff cannot be read on, are your questions to those who are read on even being answered?
So I'll start, and then I'll pass that to Mr. Bray. So we're very conscious of the potential blue-on-blue issue or US-on-US, and so we've established relationships with organizations and entities that, that are potentially flying or developing platforms for their own interests, if you will. And our goal is to continue, and we have a repeatable process, I think we've had that process for some time, to de-conflict activities that we may have to ensure that we are not potentially reporting on something that may be a developmental platform or a US operational platform that is performing either testing or performing a mission. So we will have that in place. We've already had those discussions with organizations and entities. We want to ensure that we're protecting their equities. We want to ensure that we're protecting their sources and methods while also getting at what we have here. We want to be able to...
I'm about to watch Close Encounters after this.
Absolutely. The UAP Task Force has had a process in place to work with other elements of the Department of Defense and other elements of the government to ensure that, that there is an, as simple a way as possible to de-conflict those. And when we reference that in the, in the report, I should say that we were simply accounting for the fact that there could possibly be one or two data points that had, that had leaked through, but we were quite confident that was not the explanation.
How, how, how are you all liaising with Space Command? Specifically, how are you partnering with the parts of US Space Command responsible for space domain awareness? And how, if at all, are you partnering with the Space Force to analyze UAPs?
The UAP Task Force has, has a very good relationship with Space Force, as it does with the rest of the Department of Defense. We have pulled analysts in from Space Force to ensure that, that we're availing ourselves of that expertise, as well as any, any other material they may have that would be helpful.
And Congressman, as you know, Space Force and Space Command, they have responsibility for space domain awareness. So what we've done, we coordinated with, with Space Force, we coordinated with their J-2, and she is on board in terms of helping us plug into what they have and for us to have this interactive exchange of information and data. And we're doing that with all the services, not just with Space Force, just Space Command.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any additional questions?
I wonder what's going to come out of the preliminary report. What's going to be in that?
With that, I want to thank you all for...
I hope there's more moments like what we saw here.
...on both sides of the aisle for...
There's something else going on out there, okay? Don't let them fucking fool you, all right? I don't care how small the percentage is, all right?
It's one of the few times we can demonstrate some...
There's some cases out there that we cannot explain.
...around UAPs and UFOs, so I love it. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think there's something...
And we will see you all. We will recess this hearing for the moment and return in a closed session at noon.